I'd like to call and order the Tuesday, January 5th meeting of the Monmouth City Council and note that our first meeting for the year 2016. And ask Phyllis to call the roll, please.
Counselor Carey?
Here.
Counselor Guthrie?
Here.
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Milligan?
Here.
Counselor Shaffer is absent. Counselor Silvernagle?
Here.
Mayor Oberst?
All rise to the flag, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. First item tonight is the consent calendar, which consists of the meetings, minutes from the council meeting and the council work session on December 1st of 2015. If I could have a motion to approve those two sets of minutes.
Move approval of both.
Seconded? Moved and seconded in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll adopt those two. Mayor's report, this, we had this month of no council meetings, but a few holiday activities. I had the honor of helping to light the Giant Sequoia on campus at Western. It's always a nice event. I was invited by Minnet to chair their table at the YMCA fundraiser, and that's actually the first time I've been to that event, and that was quite nice, enjoyed that. And thanks to Counselor Shutterly, I am in line to become a member of the Dallas Hospital Foundation.
West Valley Hospital.
With the capstone of Dallas.
Silvernagle.
Yep, so I know, I'll join you in there. So, and that's not official yet, but Wayne-
It will be official Thursday.
Thursday, okay. So, and that's kind of it for my activities during the month of December in any kind of official capacity. We do have some appointments tonight. The first is a committee, Budget Committee appointment, and that would be Tom Perry. And I was very impressed with his list of qualifications for that position, so I did have Phyllis forward that application around. If I could have a motion to approve that appointment?
Move approval of it.
Seconded? Moved and seconded in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then, the next piece we have is the Monmouth Engaged Appointments. Phyllis gave us a memo that indicated that three folks who are on other committees answered the call to help further populate the Gathering Spaces Committee, and that would be Bill Horner, Holly Tame, and Patton, and Randy Lowery. So, if I could have a motion to approve those three new members of the Gathering Spaces Committee. Senate? In favor? I'm sorry, seconded? Well, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And we'll have those done. And Phyllis, we've already got the rest of those committees formally approved, right? So, that means that we have all the Monmouth Engaged Committees now populated and ready to get rolling, and we'll see where that process heads. Reports from council reps to boards and commissions. Counselor Milligan?
Yes, the Arts and Culture Commission met on December the 10th, and I'm going to keep this brief because they're going to tell you a lot more at the work session. But one of the accomplishments was the lights at Main Street Park for holiday lights, Santa and the reindeer, and then the gingerbread man on the sled, I mean, on the slide. So hopefully, we'll be seeing that more, more of that next year.
Those were fun.
And they had a little brainstorming session on things to do in the future, and that's what they're going to bring to the work session for us tonight.
Okay. Counselor Carey, Minnet?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Minnet, we're met on the 17th of December, the last meeting, and I'd say that it was a smooth meeting, and we got a number of things accomplished and moved rapidly, relatively rapidly through our agenda. Some of the sort of highlights, I guess, that I would note is that we were presented with the audit report for, you know, the past year. Tom Glogau made that presentation, and there was, there were no audit adjustments were required, which, which is a good thing. And Tom included his, you know, his personal smiley face, frowny face, sort of a thing, which surprised no one, or the frowns weren't probably the surprises were. That motion passed five to one to accept that audit. I was the dissenting vote on that, and, and the reason was, and this is a little bit endemic, we get a little bit of that, not so much here, but, but, you know, basically, we walked in and were handed the audit and said, "It's yours to approve," and with not very much time to look at it. Now, what we didn't know, and the normal flow on that would be that the Finance Committee did review it, and they did, you know, diligently, and because of the way the things were structured in the agenda, we really had, I mean, there was nothing official from the Finance Committee when we, when this vote was called. So my vote was more about the procedure and the, and the, well, the information flow.
Process over content.
Yeah, I mean, it was fine. I mean, I, you know, but it, and, and while the Finance Committee never actually did tell us that they, that they, you know, endorsed the audit, it was clear that they did. So, it's probably much ado about, about nothing on my part. The Finance Committee did report that they are continuing to look at, at options for new revenue streams, new revenue sources for Minnet. A number of those proposals are sort of being fleshed out as, as time goes on. We expect to have something in January, that January meeting, that'll be a little more concrete than what it's been so far, and understandably so. And by the way, that Finance Committee seems to be working quite nicely. That's been a little problem in the past, but that's working quite nicely. You know, one of the discussions that we've, we've had, and I missed the meeting when we, when we, when it was discussed, at least I believe I did, on the sort of recalibration of our market penetration, and our market penetration went from like, you know, 55% to 60%, depending on the service, to 76% or something like that, and it was a cleanup of, of addresses and what was actually available. You know, the more this has come up, and this seems to be a decision, or seems to be a data point that is, that is causing us to work pretty aggressively into other, looking for other revenue streams, I'm going to ask if we can go back and sort of review and revisit the methodology that got us to where we are. Again, I don't question that, I just, that's something that seems pretty, pretty important to know how we, how we got there, and it may be obvious to others, and it can probably be done, handled quickly. Probably the biggest thing that we, that we discussed and came up with was a discussion about how the board and the, and management was going to work with each other. You know, what the management responsibility was, what our responsibility was as board members. I was personally, that was a very productive discussion. We're going to try to orient our, minimize the amount of time in our agendas that focuses on, you know, the, you know, the financials, the financial committee report, all of those sorts of things. They'll be there, but that won't be in the, the sales staff and all of that. Try to minimize that to a degree, so we can have more time to have, as they say, philosophic discussions, but more content-oriented discussions about ideas and how we can make the operation more efficient and, and move it ahead. In my case, I'll run out of good ideas in about 30 seconds, so it'll be up to others to, to lead that. But I, I think it will be good, and it'll kind of get us back to, you know, functioning in a way that the board's probably ought to oversee an organization like this. And then finally, David Ritchie, one of our Monmouth representative on the board, is going to be arranging a Survey Monkey or some such thing to begin the initial evaluation of Don Patton, our general manager, as he's approaching his second year anniversary. So, that's going to, that process is going to be underway in the next couple weeks. That's longer than I'd intended, but that's my, that's my report.
Okay, very good.
I'd like to make a comment. First of all, I apologize for being tardy. And cellphone, I won't have to have it on either.
Right, sorry about that, I forgot to turn it off.
My second daughter was born, and I've got my mother in town, and a lot going on, but-
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to thank John for your work over there. It really, your, you know, wanting to find more information and asking the right questions, bringing up issues in a very collected, concise way is really seeming like it's really bridging some gaps that might not have been in the past, but I wanted to thank you for your work over there, and Minnet for posting the video. There, it's happy with it all around, so keep up the good work, keep drilling down and find out what you need to know. Helps us out of time.
Okay. Any community announcements tonight?
Just that Western Oregon basketball, men's basketball teams play on Root Sports on Saturday night, nine o'clock tipoff, playing St. Martin's, I believe, so if you can't get to the ballgame, then, and if you have, if you're a Minnet subscriber, clearly, you'll be able to get Root Sports and watch the Wolves at home. It's a TV game, so anybody that is interested, show up, sit where, you know, the, the national audience can see that we got a packed house, everybody loves that.
And so what's their record?
They just lost once.
And who did they lose to?
Ducks.
So, we have, we have a Division II team here, who two years in a row has gone off to play our Pac-12 Oregon teams, and beat one of them, and held the other one to a tie early in the second half. And I think, you know, it's pretty amazing what those guys are doing.
Yeah, real nice, real nice ball club.
Yeah, and I need to get over there and see them more.
This, like the football games, you can also watch online as well, through the Western.
Yeah, screen. It's free, online streaming, home and away.
And this one's a home game?
Yes, it is.
And also, I mean, we don't want to forget the football team, ex-football player Tyrell Williams, another wedding, grabs four touchdowns in the NFL.
Cool.
Big things happening.
All right. Okay, city managers' report.
Yeah, a few things. We obviously had some ice on the ground on Sunday and Monday. We came through fine, didn't have hardly any issues around town. Power lines, okay.
They still have ice on the ground in Portland?
Oh.
They just kept everything frozen solid.
Excuse me, close together.
Yep, so we came through pretty well, so no deal on that. Senior Center project, bids are coming out Thursday, so we'll find out where we are at that point. Highway 99 landscaping project, well, not landscaping, the reconstruction project, but landscaping component, we had a good meeting with the ODOT staff, talked about a couple of options. One's trees one way or another, but then there's either kind of a ground cover option or grass, so a couple of different ways. And what they did is, it's kind of fun, they took some photos while they were here, then they'll be able to Photoshop in what the two different things look like, and so we'll see what that goes. So, they'll get that going pretty soon. They're going to be making a presentation to council the first meeting in February.
Can we get copies of those?
Yeah, when they're ready, yeah, I think that's, that's the ideas I'll have for everybody.
Cool.
Yeah, we'll get that. Just a reminder, we got the budget pre-meeting, first one, next Tuesday, so next Tuesday. And then the day after that is the State of the Cities address. And it's different this year, so it's actually in the evening. The idea is trying to get more general citizens to be able to come to that. So it'll actually be at Western Oregon. Western Oregon graciously hosting, waiving fees to do the function there, very supportive. It'll be at 6:30, kind of a social time, and seven o'clock for the addresses.
And that's 13?
Yeah.
I think that's a very short regimen.
Yeah, it'll be the Columbia Room, which is like, kind of underneath the bookstore.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Scott, when the, when the ODOT people come in a couple weeks, will they be focusing on the project specifically, or will there be other topics that can be broached with them?
The people that are coming are just talking about the project. Yeah, so the, the project team here is the people assigned to this project. If you had broader questions, we might find someone else to talk to you about that.
Well, I just recall, I thought, Mr. Mayor, you said there was going to be at some point someone that we could express concerns about-
Yeah, I think it might have worked at this to just bring up the topic of the crossing at Madrona and the safety issues there.
We've been, we've been beating on that issue each time we have a meeting, and they smile, and they refer to us to the other person.
Right. So, I'm going to continue.
It sounds like when these people come in, that's not going to be the best venue for that.
And I actually did have an opportunity to speak with the director, not director, about that, and his assistant, and so they're aware of the situation, and it's, you know, all we can do is keep pushing, I guess.
Yeah, and just a, just a factual element, too, we did actually ask during the process, "Okay, well, they say that Madrona is too close to Main Street," so then we asked, "Well, how far back would you need to be?" And we were hoping it wouldn't be too much. The furback enough is basically the driveway to Bymore. And then it'd be okay at that point, which is kind of irrelevant, really costly by the time you run a sidewalk down there, and no one would use it.
Fill the ditch.
So that was there, and based on the parameters, there's always hope to adjust, but that, the basic separation, that's where they would actually want it.
Well, this, you know, it continues-
I think it's fair game for you guys to duly note that the people that are coming, though they aren't the people that deal with that issue, but you can sure say, "Gosh, we sure like to see something, you know, while we're doing all this."
Yeah. Well, I just got a report from a, you know, constituent that, you know, just, you know, sort of breathlessly, and he and I have talked about this, that reported, you know, near a crash, you know, near pedestrian auto crash at that deal a month ago. And so it continues to fester, and it's, it'll be a solution at some point.
I hope so. When I did mention Monmouth Engage and the desire for bike-ped safety, that actually made people go, "Oh," a little bit. So, I think that might be a point of leverage going forward, that, you know, to note that the community has really stated this is a sign of concern. So, are there any citizen comments tonight? I'm assuming there aren't any, I'm sorry, any more council comments for, citizen comments tonight? And not seeing any business agenda as a single item tonight, and that is a public hearing, LA 1501, or should this be 1601?
No, 15.
Okay.
Yeah. Legislative Amendment 1501, our proposed amendments to the Monmouth City Code, Section Title 17 of the code is the city's subdivision ordinance. The proposed amendments add a one, there are one paragraph that would be added to this section, and provide a one-year warranty bond on all public improvements in landscaping and public rights of way prior to final plat approval. So this would require a posting of a post-completion warranty bond for the public improvements. And the way the public improvements work, they are designed to the city's standards, built to the city's standards, and then upon inspection by the city, they are accepted as part of the city's street system typically. We're talking about rights of way. What this would do is provide a one-year warranty period to make sure that those improvements hold up and are properly constructed. And the value of the bond would equal 30% of the cost for the improvements. It provides some insurance for the city during that warranty period to make sure everything's properly working.
Have we had any issues, Mark, around street failure, new streets failing, or?
Not that I'm familiar with, no.
But this is, I'm just curious, this is a good, this is a good safety measure.
Yeah, when I worked at the county years ago, I recalled there was a rural subdivision in West Salem out of the city, but they, they built the road in the wrong time of the year. It was Novemberish when it was too wet to put things down, and the road began failing the following spring. And I'm not, I can't remember if this, if the county had a warranty bond in place or not, but they're very typically found in subdivision codes.
Sure. Any other questions? Yeah. Okay, good.
So, help me understand how this bond works. If I'm a builder, I lay out the money for the cost of what's called streets gutters, et cetera. I take 30% of that money and I give it to the city, or?
You post a bond.
Okay, to, to an escrow agent of some kind? Okay.
You purchase a bond from a surety, a company that issues the bonds, yeah.
Okay, so there, and not all that money comes back to me upon the one year, does it? 100% of the funds go back?
Well, you pay a premium for the bond, but, and so you actually don't put 30%, you pay the premium for-
So I go to the-
It's like buying an insurance policy, that's right, yeah. That's right.
So what, what do we anticipate that premium would cost a builder? You talked about 30% of the, the bond is for 30% of the cost. What, what's an average premium look like? If I'm building a division out, what's it going to take out of my pocket in addition to what I would have planned on before this went into effect?
Depends on how much street.
Yeah, I don't, I don't work with them. Do you? Yeah, not at that level.
No.
I think it's small. I mean, I, please don't quote me, but I think it's in the realm of like, you know, 5%, 10% of whatever the value is.
I have a 6%.
In 6? Okay.
Okay, so we got estimates of 6% and 10%. Okay.
Yeah, so something in there.
So, if the street was a $100,000 street, I'm going to have to come up with a $30,000 bond, which is going to cost me-
Six, 10 grand, absolutely.
$60,000 for me. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and then the alternate, where we've been lucky, and remember, this is all improvements. You know, if this wasn't in place in the past, and if we had an issue, then the city would be going, "Oh, no, the $200,000 waterline just failed." And then we'd be ripping a street up and doing that on our own dime.
And so just to, how's this come up recently? How's this come up in history that you know, that we've had to go in and do that? We've had to repair shoddy?
No, we have, no. To my understanding, we have not, no. But we're also rolling the dice, because, because if a street were to fail, you're tapping into the street fund, which is kind of depleted at present to pay for it, so.
And John, if I could just do your math on that, if it's a $100,000 road project, $30,000 bond, the premium would be 6%, let's say, of the $30,000.
Right.
So not 6,000 to 10,000, but more like 1,500 or something like that, probably.
Okay.
Yeah.
That was his math.
Oh, okay.
I just, I misunderstood the quote.
Right. Very good.
And, and one more, one last question, I'll let John take a swing at this. So this is after, it's only for a year. So if, if there are, is an instance that there's a failure after a year, then it's still on the city at that point. We do have to go in and take it. Okay.
Yep. John?
You know, I've done some research, I had some questions, Marshall, many of the same that you had, and so I got a lot of my answers from Scott, which were assuring, and, to me, this is something pretty important that we do, it's very common. It occurs in almost all municipalities and other governmental entities. You know, it's, it's typically the part of, one of the costs of development, my concern was, which I hate to, you know, create something that's going to drive development costs higher, but this is really, this is a necessity for us. I have two questions. Is one year enough? Will we be able to know typically whether we're going to have some sort of, you know, subsurface failure or waterline failure or something in a year? It ought to be more than that. I don't know. Is that, is that a standard number as well?
For the biggest percentage of issues that you will have, they would occur within that first year, yes.
I figured it out, or you wouldn't have?
And now, a tougher one is the road one, because it's a classic, when you're dealing with all the layers of grading, and if somebody really botched the lowest grade, that would take time.
Yeah.
You know, so that could go past a year.
But it's, it's hard to get, yeah.
Yeah, and then just remember that we do have inspectors out there during the process.
Now, do we require, what's, what's the other bond that the developers like this have to, is a performance bond, is that what that is? Now, if, if someone posted a performance bond on that, and it included warranties on street repair and that sort of thing, which I've-
There's separate bonds.
Pardon me?
There's separate bonds.
But some, but, but I'm not sure that some, that there aren't some of those performance bonds that might include that. I don't know that, I've been told that by somebody who was pretty sure but not certain. My question would be, you know, would that suffice? Wouldn't we be able to determine if they do have, in fact, have that one-year warranty on the street repair?
Potentially, if they did a package arrangement, so they took care of the performance requirements, and they met our standard for the warranty, if they, if they went to somebody, bundle that up, got a better price, as long as it's all in order, I think it's fine with them.
That's, I assume that would be-
It doesn't have to be a separate bond, just as long as there's a piece of paper that covers the business.
Yeah. I think, I think typically, it's going to be two, but not exclusive.
Right, yeah, just, good, good question, John.
Yeah, and typically, just if you think through, is if the, if you're in the initial phase, let's say you're budgeting a little high, that'd be the number you'd use to get your, your warranty bond. When you're very well about the project and the lower cost, you'd actually want to use that one in your math. You know, at least I would, that's what I would do, but I'm not a developer, so.
Question for probably either Mark or Russ. Am I in the ballpark if I were to say that on the total sale price of a house, let's call it a $300,000 house, then 10% of those costs could be related to street infrastructure? $30,000 on a, on a $300,000 house, is that at least on the high side of things? I'm trying to ascertain how much this-
I haven't even evaluated that.
Do you mean including SDCs, or are you just talking about-
I'm just trying to ascertain a rough number. For me, the big question in my mind without a vote is how this is going to impact the sale price of a new home.
So, I'm going to guess that $100,000 for the block of street is not outlandish, and we just figured $1,500 for that, you know, $100,000 piece of street?
Right.
And there are 6, 8, 10 houses on that block of street, so if you take the $1,500 and spread it across those houses?
Yeah.
It's about $150, the cost of the house, or the top 300. So it's not a huge impact?
So 10% is way on the high side?
And it would, it would probably be more expensive if the city had to come up with a financing mechanism to raise the funds to repair the street that failed, because we didn't require a bond, and somebody bought us a shoddy street. So, I think, yeah, it's, it's obviously-
Or see the developer.
Right.
That's the other thing you're going to do, which is going to add more cost to us.
Right, then we pay lane.
I've gone through the same, the same, I had the same reservations, I'm trying to figure out how, but, but it is very common, it's pretty much, you know, you, most developers would expect that. And, you know, it, it does provide a degree of, of, I mean, because, you know, let's say we, we don't get the lawsuit, and we've got to drop in, you know, I don't know, $500,000, 50, you name it, I don't even know, we're throwing around numbers so I can know what we're talking about. But a lot of money into repairing something, a lot of people would say, "Well, why didn't you get that on the front end? Why weren't you assured that it was done properly?" So, I'm okay with this, but I had the same. Now, and it's not uncommon in other jurisdictions to have a higher percentage-
Higher than 30.
Higher than 30. Then, and so, if anybody gripes about it, we'd say, "Well, it's kind of a bargain." You can go to a lot of places, it's going to be 40, so. But we had the same exact thoughts, Mark.
Okay.
Yeah, well, between Holly and I, did some checking, too, on this thing here. And it would, at the most, it would probably add maybe $300 to $400 to the lot value, the lot value. That's what most of the people I talked to said. That's not, you know, if it's a $60,000 lot, that's what they said it would add to. So it isn't like, "We're going from 60 to 70,000 for the lot."
Right.
I mean, they, all of my talked-to builders said it's well within reach.
Yeah.
I mean, if it was, if it was on the total cost, yeah, you could add 2,500 to 5,000 to a lot, but with just the insurance premium, that's what I was told. So I called and asked, just to get some people's, because it's in Salem, they have it in Salem to 244. I think it's 40 over there, though.
Yeah.
So, I'm just asking what they charge more. There wasn't extravagant numbers, what I'm trying to say.
We're talking less than-
And that's all we're looking at, is a lot valuation to sell.
Okay, less than a thousand bucks.
Oh, yeah, way better than that.
Okay.
Okay. So, any other questions? And I guess I never formally opened the hearing, and to, you know, invite Mark up, and we jumped into this, so. Can we assume the hearing was opened?
You can open it now for public comment?
Okay, so I'm opening for public comment if there is any, and seeing nobody bolting to their feet to talk about street bonds, street repair bonds, I'll close the hearing, and we have a proposed motion that we accept this legislative amendment, and will there be an ordinance that goes with this and so on?
Yes, yeah.
So, first step would be to accept the recommendation of the planning council on this legislative amendment, and if I could have a motion to that?
I move that council accept the recommendation, the planning commission adopt legislative
I move that council accept the recommendation, the planning commission adopt legislative amendment 1501.
Second?
Second.
And can we just waste the vote?
Yeah.
In favor? I oppose. Okay, and Mark, bring us ordinance.
Okay, we'll do, thank you. Mr. Mayor, and a question to Mark, and I should've asked this before, it just dawned on me. But did we, is this, the fact that this is moving forward, is that known in the developer community here in town?
I don't believe it would be published. But there was a hearing of the planning...
Yeah, there was a hearing for the planning commission. Yeah.
And this hearing was duly done, is that so?
I'm sure it's noticed, but, you know, we got out of the whole deal with Western Oregon and some of those sorts of things in terms of conversations on an impact to people. I don't know who you contacted, so I just...
Yeah, at this point, we only have two people that are doing subdivision-type work, so that'd be easy to make contact.
I don't know. If they wanna come comment at ordinance time, that'd be good. Thanks. Okay, that brings the end of the business agenda.
I want to put a council comment, I wanna thank...
Well, that's ours, that's our always council comments. Please go ahead.
On the council, and I wanna thank Mark very much for all his work he did on the story commission. And we got that in that weekender at the first part of December. I don't know if any of you read it on the apps. It was a two-page write-up. I thought that was really nice, I wanted to thank Mark for that. And, you know, it gets our town knowing that much more.
That's right. I had an interesting phone call from someone who is affiliated with the Kendall Jackson Wine Empire. And they're interested in creating an appellation for this part of the Atlantic Valley wine area. And he was curious about some history and so on. He said the feds are really picky about the names for these things. And that they want to see that the name has a historic background of some kind in the area. And he was proposing that this become the Monmouth Independence Wine Area. Or the Independence Monmouth Wine Area. And did I have any notion about which one would be more appropriate? And he pointed out that the railway that used to run between the two cities was the Independence Monmouth Railway. However, the Chamber of Commerce was the Monmouth Independence Chamber of Commerce. And he knew about the coin flip story on how we got to be the Monmouth Independence Chamber instead of the Independence Monmouth. And I pointed out Minnet, which he was unaware of. And that may have been the piece that actually turned the tales. He was gonna talk to Mayor Garble as well, and I think he's talked to a lot of folks locally just to see what he could find out. And we, you know, he said that the idea that we would have this appellation perhaps with Monmouth as the first name, and then being the last right town on the West Coast up until, you know, 10, 12 years ago, was, would probably be one of those things that everybody who wrote about the area, because he says he's a wine writer too, everybody who wrote about the area would start out by commenting on that. Anyway, we'll see where that heads. I just thought it was quite fascinating to talk to this guy and see where he was headed for this.
John, if I could tag team a comment off of that?
Yes.
If it becomes a sticking point to moving forward with this naming process of some sort of conversation between the two cities about who owns the right to the first name, can I just say that I would support Monmouth just shrinking back, taking second place?
Oh, I told him it didn't matter to me. I said, you know, I said, "When you talk to Mayor Garble, he'll be an independence booster, and he'll tell you independents should come first, and I'll tell you Monmouth should come first, because that's my job, but I'll accept either one."
Seems like that'd be a dumb thing to get hung up on.
Oh, no, exactly. And I don't think, I don't think it would get hung up. But he was trying to establish a historic basis for one or the other. And I said, "My guess is that most folks would say Monmouth Independence," which is what we roll off the tongue at this point in history. But I don't know. So we'll see, we'll see where that would head.
One more comment. The Central Lions hosted a community breakfast on January 1st, first day of the year, at the Senior Center. And we had a great turnout. It really made us all appreciative of the senior center that we have and excited for the expansions that we're going to be engaged in. It was really a very nice event, probably had nearly 100. And, you know, typically elderly folks, senior types, but they had all kinds of extended family that were in town and so on. So it was a lot, it was good. And it's nice to have that facility, and looking forward to the improvement.
Yep.
So John, I'd like to make a comment, and I've already, I'm gonna read a statement that I've already distributed to the council. And I've had some further conversation with Scott that may change some things in this, so there'll be only slight modifications, because I do think there's still some questions to get answered here. But I wanna take note that less than a week ago, on December 30th, a member of our community, his name is John Shapley, and I hope I'm pronouncing his last name correctly, I didn't have an opportunity to meet him unfortunately, was killed on Hoffman Road while cycling after being struck from behind by the driver of an automobile. I would ask those present to join me in a moment of silence for John and the family and friends who mourn his death. It is our responsibility to help those in mourning find peace, and also to take action to reduce the chances of another cycling death on our roads. Our citizens, through a number of channels, including the visioning process, have formally identified safe cycling and walking as a priority. And thus, it should be a priority for city management, for the city management as well. It should not be dangerous to work, shop, and spend time with family and friends by foot or bike. This is very much a social justice issue, a health issue, and considering the sorry state of the city's streets funds, a fiscal issue. I would ask that the city council consider and adopt the following guidelines. Number one, that the city reject, if possible, or strongly object when outright rejection is not possible, any new street project planned in or adjacent to Monmouth that does not include a bike lane that meets federal highway admissions administration standards. This includes revisiting the plans for the Highway 99 Main Street work to be completed this summer to ensure that the current plans include designated bike lanes. Number two, that existing streets that are highly utilized but do not have federal highway administration standard bike lanes be outfitted with signage or shallow lane markings as appropriate. This request has been made several times, and the appropriate time to act has passed. Number three, that an inventory of city lighting be taken to ensure that visibility after sunset is sufficient for cyclists and pedestrians to be safe on every city street. Proposals for additional lighting should be acted upon as soon as possible. Me speaking personally, specific to the Highway 99 work being done this summer, in an email from 11/18/2015, council was asked to support the allocation of $136,000 for premium landscaping along the newly renovated stretch of Highway 99. I will officially oppose the allocation of these monies if the plans for the Highway 99 project do not include sufficient infrastructure to safely accommodate our cyclists. Picking trees over human lives, even in the name of economic progress, is an ill-prioritized use of our monies. It is unfortunate that it took another heartbreaking cycling death, the most recent of at least eight cycling deaths in Oregon for 2015, for us to take these matters seriously, but it's not too late to act. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Marshall. I got a text on my phone, I'm not sure who it came from, actually, because it was a number I didn't recognize the night this accident occurred, reminding me that at one point, I had said, "I hope that we can work with Polk County to put widening on that shoulder, on the south shoulder of Hoffman Road between 99 and 16, before somebody gets hit," because I've seen increasing numbers of cyclists and pedestrians using that. And it's been over a decade now, and maybe somebody can remember more nearly when it was. Polk County recognized that a lot of people were going out the Highway 99 bike path, cutting westbound on Hoffman, and then back in on Rebel Road into town for exercise purposes. And they found a way to widen the south shoulder of that stretch of Hoffman Road. Unfortunately, the stretch between 99 and 16th Street has a deep ditch on one side, and it would take considerably more to do that project along there. I do believe that it's time to at least begin the conversation with the county in recognition of the fact that this growing broader community of Monmouth Independence, that we do have growth to the north and increasing numbers of people using that direction from 99 to 16th and back. And it'd be an expensive project, and it would be one that wouldn't get done next week. But, you know, my usual thing, if the only way to get to the S is to ask a question, and I just wonder if it's not time to start at least exploring options around that. It's a county road, not a city road, and that's part of the issue. We would have to, you know, appeal to the counties. I'm sure not too much healthier than our street fund, to see if this is a project that we'd get supported. But I, you know, I would like to look into that, Marshall. And just a quick correction, the road work is not this summer, it's next summer.
Next summer?
Yeah. 16 is gonna be, I'm putting high balls to it. 18 for both of them, or just?
This one.
This is Highway 99?
To your comments regarding the widening of the south side of Hoffman, we would be much more politically powerful if we were partnered with Independence on that.
Oh, yeah.
And so that much would be a topic of discussion, at least at our next joint meeting. So I'd like to put that on the agenda.
That's one of the reasons that I would love to see the 16th to 99 piece of some kind of trail built. But I don't know that we can pull that one off either, to get people off Hoffman that way.
Well, yeah, and as far as I'm concerned, that could be an agenda item as well. But because the whole interface with Polk County is gonna be much more effective with the two communities, because they've got a significant residential area out there that could be served by that. But many come to Western.
And, you know, we have sort of a sidewalk between 16th and Gun Club, but it's only sort of a sidewalk. So that whole area is a problem.
I could add just two things. The problem isn't just at Hoffman, it's important to remember, we don't wanna be chasing shadows. And the second thing I would just add is that I will continue to ride Hoffman in any condition that it's in, I'll ride every street out there that isn't gonna keep me off my bike, and I hope it doesn't keep anyone else off their bike either.
Yes, or a comment from the audience?
I wanted to add, Marshall...
Why don't you come up and give us your name for the record? Sorry.
Knee replaced on Monday, so...
I'll be following you down that.
Tiffy Graham, short-term resident. I wanted to add, to what you said, if we could add sidewalks, I've talked to you about it. And with that past rain we had down there at the corner of where Main Street turns off and goes out to wherever, that floods every time it rains. And that sidewalk in there, from that end house up to the apartments, is always flooded. So people are always out on the road. And that sidewalk section there is what caused my knee. I twisted it on that sidewalk. And that sidewalk from my house, which is at the end of Main, all the way up to here, is in terrible condition. And people are off on the street because of it, so...
And officially, by the property owners, you're supposed to maintain sidewalks, but it's something that we did not wish to turn to force.
Yeah, but it's probably damaged. I twisted my knee last November, and I'm having a knee replaced with this Monday, so...
You know, we do have standards, though, that, you know, if the vaulting or that sort of thing exceeds a particular, I was gonna say one inch.
Don't walk it, don't walk it, because you'll twist the knee.
I might, because we have a clear ordinance that, and so it may be that we need to work with that property owner or perhaps provide some assistance.
There's a few property owners that, well, I'm just gonna say the sidewalk, but I was walking my dog, and it was November last year, the leaves were on the ground, so I didn't see the drop off. And that's how I twisted my knee. Sorry about that. And there's a couple of spots, there's, the trees are just so big, sidewalks are nice to it.
This is the big leaf mabel effect in that part of town.
Beautiful. Thank you.
And when there's issues, we need people to bring them to us, because we can't walk every street, and we know our own neighborhoods well, maybe not others.
Yes, just name them city for the record.
Carol Hoddle and Monmouth. Here as part of the Arts and Culture Committee tonight. But given that this issue's been brought up, I wanted to give a couple of comments. First of all, on my way over here tonight, I'm always looking for people at night on their bikes. And, you know, there were people that, the area that when I turned onto Clay from 99, I couldn't even see them going across. If it weren't for cars stopping on their side, I wouldn't have been even aware that they were there, except that I looked for them. So the lighting, I think, is a big problem. Especially, you know, when people are crossing streets. It's not just tonight, I've seen it other times. And again, if I weren't taking that personal precaution, being conscientious and committed, I could easily see how someone could be hit. Number two is I attended the series of Polk County rural tourism workshops last year. And I will say, when you're talking about options of people working with making biking safer, I know that they have a bicycling and tourism committee who is working to bring more bicyclists to Polk County. So I don't know what their resources are at this point, I'm not on that committee, I'm on the Cultural and Heritage Committee. But I do wanna suggest that they may have some information or be able to somehow bring that to the fore if Polk County works with the city of Monmouth. And also, I live on Madrona. So I will say that that crossing from Madrona onto 99 is always, always dicey. I don't care what the weather is, I don't care what the time of day, I don't care what time of day of the week it is. So I'm not sure quite what's being done in regards to Madrona, but just know that that is an area that certainly needs attention, especially for pedestrians. Thank you.
One more quick comment. Hi.
Finally gone.
I'm Erin Mark, I live in Monmouth over on Cherry Lane. So to kind of, you know, add on to what TJ said, was on a block that affects my family a lot is that block of Whitman between Clay and Main, where there's no sidewalk, there's Christ Church to the west, if you recall. So there's just no sidewalk there. And so there's a sidewalk continuing on Whitman on the east side, that block going up towards Ackerman. But there's no sidewalk there. And so the, and that's kind of an access into campus. And it's where cars do a quick turn, there's no stop. And now that my kids, my son's 10, and he's out riding his bike by himself now, and, you know, walking. And they can't walk that way safely. I don't want, you know, because if you're walking, there's a little bit of the road that you can be on along the curb, and it's right where the cars turn, but it's wider there than on the east side of the road. So thank you for bringing this up, for asking the questions, for looking into what the safety gaps are. Because, you know, he's out there, and I'm glad we live somewhere where he can be out there riding. You know, he rides to campus to meet my husband, you know, and I love that. And I want him to be able to do it safely, and I want to know that those issues are being considered. So thanks.
Thank you everyone for your comments. I think this is, the back and forth from the citizenry is something we need more of.
And particularly the pedestrian pieces and bicycling pieces, there is a bike ped committee that's come out of our Monmouth Engage that you all are familiar with. And so I'm sure there'll be an opportunity for feedback to that group.
And then that committee has been appointed that there's, when they start doing actual projects and tasks, I'm sure they'll need hands.
So I appreciate you bringing this up, Marshall. But on the same, having been a cyclist for decades, I've been a driver for decades. What's really frustrating for me, as both, watching what's going on now, is black should not be the new night wear. And black is what everybody wants to wear at night. I mean, it's, that to me is the biggest message, is that the cost of trying to get enough light for everybody to be lit up, regardless of what they wear, is outrageously expensive. If cyclists would understand that they are vehicles, there's laws that they need to abide by, and that there's clothing that they should abide by, that they would be a lot more safe on the road. Now, I'm not saying it's not gonna stop every accident that happens. But I can just tell you that if cyclists that I see at night going up and down Clay Street had better lighting, had better light clothes, and were on the right side of the, correct side of the road, they wouldn't be as much at risk. And I mean, so I, I mean, when I heard about that accident, it sent shivers to me, being a cyclist. It's the last thing I would wanna have happen to me, as a cyclist or a driver. And, but at the same time, there's a responsibility that the drivers and the cyclists have to step up to. We as a council can't protect everybody from everything. I know we can make a difference in some of it, but I've been asking for years for better lighting on Clay Street, so I can walk home safely and not get hit by a car. So I can see the cyclist, so I don't have to pull out and hit one. I've nearly hit several on Clay Street, because they're on the wrong side of the road and they're not lit up. And so I, I wanna see some changes. And I hope this is the catalyst right now that helps bring some of those about. But there's gotta be dual awareness of not only of us as a council to make changes, but the community, the citizens who wanna use the roads, and those modes of transportation have to take responsibility for some of their own survival. for some of their, their own survival. And, and it's not to diminish what you're saying, but it's just to add to what you're saying is, we'll take responsibility for what we can do as a council, but they've got, the citizens have to take responsibility as users of the roads.
Steve, I just want to say, I do not disagree at all, you've seen how I ride, I ride lit up, but I think that, and I fully support that, I want to note there are laws on the books that require headlights and taillights. We have taken steps to ensure that cyclists, as a council, as a city, we've taken steps to ensure that cyclists are lit. The thing that I want to caution us on is whenever one of these things happen, all sorts of stories about unlet cyclists come out, and all sorts of stories about cyclists not wearing helmets come out, and these sort of arguments become a club with which to victim blame the person who passed. And I'm not saying you're trying to do that, I think that we all fall into that trap, we ask questions, one of the first questions I ask myself is, was this cyclist lit up? And the investigation has not concluded, indications are that the cyclist was, that John, the cyclist that killed, was lit up. But I think we need to be cautious not to, not to make this a club with which to victim blame, and also to remember that in every single interaction of auto versus cyclist, the cyclist will lose every single time.
Oh, I know, and that's why I hope that more cyclists, and what we can do to help them, will help themselves more.
Absolutely, I've.
And that's kind of what I'm.
You've heard me, I am, I am up there every day, and I'm also the first person to rag on anybody riding without a headlight and a taillight, because that is the law, after dark, you have to have a headlight and a taillight on your bike.
And they're so cheap anymore.
Go to Veal Bikes, right down the street.
For a battery-powered LED bike light, and they're bright. I still had a generator light on that bike when I gave it to my son, he thought it was the coolest, it's gone now. So, assuming there are no other comments, I'm sorry, Royal, I didn't see your hand, yes?
Yeah, well, I, I kind of agree with some of what I was going to say here, but other things are, our town is hard, but is not very safe, Main Street, I want to bring this out, because I ride every day I can in this town, and I walk every day in this town on my bicycle, and you brought those curbs way out on every corner, for, you know, the beautification, there is hardly room for a bicycle and a car, if that's, you go ride there, find out.
No, I don't.
I've been hit twice, now on Main Street, both times on my handlebars, I'm trying to stay over as far as I can by cars, trying to get down that street, and I know they're pushing the white line on the other side. We need to look at that kind of stuff further down the road, does it, is that really good? I mean, it may be beautification, but is it really good for bicycles? No. It needs to be back two feet, because you look at the parking, and it isn't. But the other thing that I've asked here several times, and I'm going to put it out here again, is I like the shared bike lines with the road, why aren't they on there?
Right.
I mean, you can get money from the state, I know you can, if you put in for a grant for that, that's a safety factor, through the highway department.
And, and, Royal, we actually, at Traffic Safety, talked about.
Yeah, but we talked, but we, I've been here for, I don't know, 40 years, and I've seen nothing but talk. And I'm with Marshall, I'm going to finish second, you tell me what your little traffic safety does, but this is the kind of stuff that we need to go ahead and get a handle on, is to share the road. We can ask the county for the same thing on Hoffman Road, is to see if they won't put someone to a doctor's, it's going to help everybody, it's not just a cyclist, it's to help the automotive, and I, I'm just, I ride and drive, so I know, I, I've been running off the road, I'll bet you a dozen times in this county cleared the ditch, I've ruined two or three rims, I've broke headlights and everything else, but I still ride, because I enjoy it, and I've ridden all the United States, and we're no different here than we are any place else. I mean, the roads are narrow back east, they're up in Washington, into Canada, so everybody has to work together, but when you find a community that goes together and tries to put signs up, share the road with the bicycles, put signs on the asphalt, things are better. Now, I know this gentleman was killed out here, I hate to see that on Hoffman Road, I look back three years ago, one of the gentlemen was out here in 99, that pulled in front of Ford, Mr. Ford was killed, what was he doing on the highway when we spent 18,000s of dollars for bicycle path on the other side? I mean, I look at all this stuff, it's, and I agree with Steve, it's everybody work together, but if, if we can spend not too much money on sharing the lanes, I think that's an important thing, and I've talked about it, and I've heard people talk about it, but that's as far as it gets.
So, just letting you know, I raised this with Chief and with Russ, to look at sheros and signage on Main Street, and it's not cheap, but Russ, I believe we said, yeah, let's do it, but not right away, and maybe tie it into the Highway 99 or 51 project, when we've got people here doing those same kinds of markings anyway, right? And that where Traffic Safety left it was.
Incorporating into a larger project.
Right, right, so, I think, I think that there's a good chance that we would see that going forward on Main Street. If it's on us, it is expensive, with a very depleted street fund, that's two issues and one that we need to address, so.
You know, I, when I, when I read your materials, Marshall, and concurred, and I concur with everything else we've got, we've talked about here, however, I think we need to decide where these routes need to be. To determine, I'm not sure Main Street is the right one, matter of fact, I'm pretty sure it's not, but I don't know that, I don't know what the safest corridor is, there are people that know how to plot those things, or know how to, you know, plan crossings and all of that stuff, I think we need to give that some thought, and once professional people that come in and give us a hand with that, I don't know, but I think that in order to do that, needs to be done well, as you all would, so just, just that.
There's a whole grant, grant proposal process that we could go through, enhance grant pro, program that's set up for proposals for these funds.
And that's actually where the, the Main Street on the other side of the highway.
Which would walk us, walk you through, the determination of the track, you know, the funding sources, the dates, the end dates, and then, just like anything else, I think it would be also something we could look at, moving forward, I've always harped on, you know, we have a fantastic park system, we have one of the best I've ever seen, and we continue to make it better, and we all have seen that with the, you know, continued awesome park projects. The one thing that lacks is the recreation piece to our Parks and Recreation Department, I don't know if you call it department, but it would, I think it could be, yeah, it used to be, I'd be very interested in finding out, you know, how to do what you were saying, and identify the recreation needs in this community, and I think biking is, obviously, and pedestrian walking, is obviously at the top of the list, I mean, it's been addressed in so many different areas, from the citizens, from us, from sadly deaths, it would be, I think, you know, you know, of utmost importance to identify where recreation, you know, signage needs to be, where we can identify the most unsafe areas, because I can tell you right now, there is not a safe place currently, except for the intersection at Burgerville, the Main Street intersection highway, to cross the highway, as a walking or riding a bike, there's just not a safe place. I mean, many years back at the YMCA, there was a committee I worked on, that identified the one crossing right there at the police station, where I think it's Church Street?
Church Street, yeah.
As their main project, as, to create a safe pathway to school, and then, more importantly, a safe pathway to utilize the schools when they're not in session. Kids, I mean, as a family, my wife and I decided to move to the other side of the highway, the side of, I don't know, to the east side of the town, the highway, so that we were on the side of the schools, so that we didn't have to worry about that 10 years down the road, because from, since I've been here, and the two years prior, I've heard the same dang thing from the Traffic Safety Committee, we'll, we'll ask, we'll ask, we'll work on it, we'll work on it, it's time we make a step up, work through recreation, parks and rec, I think their money could be allocated there, we have not, since I've been here, we haven't done anything with recreation, except for, you know, making the parks more usable, but I think it's time we, you know, we take a stand, and if it takes us making the decision and not, you know, I think it's not happened, I mean, it's, we can't have more deaths, every time I see it, it's like what Obama said today, it makes me mad, it frustrates me to no end that it takes someone dying for us to have discussion, and then for to have people, I'm sorry, Steve, but to say that they should light themselves up more, there's laws on the books, like Marshall said, to handle that, we need to take steps to better the safety for them, no matter if they're lighted up or not, because the laws on the books, we, we don't have laws, we don't have that, we're not going to change the laws, and we can encourage that all we want, but we need to do stuff on our end, where we can make our streets safer, because there is too many places in our streets in our town that are flat-out unsafe, walking, riding, driving, doesn't matter, so I think it'd be, one way to go about that would be to look at recreation needs on our streets, in our city, and decide what is unsafe, because I think we'd all not be surprised, there would be some severe, severe unsafe places, not only on the highway, I know of many, and I know it restricts where we go, walking our daughter and dog, so, and we've heard it enough, so I'll leave it at that.
And so we have a committee, an engaged process, that's actually going to really seriously address this.
That's right.
We've added to it.
May I follow up with a comment?
Yeah.
Very quickly?
As long as we're, as long as we're commenting, let's go ahead, you're at your side.
Yeah, I'm Carol Hoddle from Monmouth. When Jesse was just talking, I happened to think, you know, I'm in Corvallis a lot at night, and I have some of the same problems, Corvallis, bikers that are, same problems we're talking about here in Monmouth, seeing bikers. I also thought about the kind of experience that I had over at the State of Oregon during some of my work there, and two things are in common with both of those, that as I cross the street in Corvallis, or at the State of Oregon campus, they have these lit crosswalks that are blinking, those things stop cars.
That's what we're trying to get.
And I just want to say, I, please do that, because I think that will help solve a lot of the issues we're talking about.
The big issue that we have is that we don't own Main Street, and we don't own the highway, those belong to somebody else, and their rules apply, not ours.
But you're right, and it is appropriate to throw that at the feet of ODOT, because ODOT needs to hear this too.
Yeah, no, they do, and that's what I'm hoping the committee can do.
Those blinking, you know, I go on Main Street a lot, Corvallis at night, those blinking side of the crosswalks work, because everybody just stops.
And we've asked for them.
And you can see the person crossing.
We've asked for them, and so far we've been told no.
Oh, they work.
Yeah, no, it's not, that's not questioned, that's not the question.
Yeah.
It's that the church, the Madrona intersection is too close to the traffic light at Main Street for ODOT to agree to put a flashing beacon at the Madrona Street crosswalk. That's, that's the problem, and so, hopefully, we hope that if we just keep hitting them over there, whether eventually we'll get an exception, that's all we can do.
Is that why we don't have one at Church Street as well?
We could have one at Church Street, it's not too close.
Yeah.
But if we do Church Street, don't we lose the crosswalk for the students then, for,
because that was brought up by the chief, and we lose that crosswalk for children then, to be able to put a guard there and everything, if we.
I'm not sure.
Oh, yes, when that was, that was, it was told us, wasn't it, the chief?
Well, one thought.
Put a guard there.
We could have a crossing guard at Church and 99 if we have.
A blinking light?
The blinking, pedestrian-triggered blinking lights at Church and 99.
He says we can.
Well, that's our obvious, they rule again, yeah.
Because the stu, I just want to, from what Jesse said, my son stays after school for chess club two days a week at 4:00, and he has friends who regularly cross over, because they live in Weineger and Broad down in that way, at 4:00, they can't get across there, so, just, yeah, but I, that's it, yeah, that, your hands are tied if they tell you can't have a crossing guard in, but, yeah.
The one good thing is that we have a director at ODOT who is trying really hard to be more flexible, so we'll just keep our fingers crossed and keep working on it. So, we have a work session tonight with a three-item agenda, and we have come to the end of the regular meeting agenda, so if I could have a motion to adjourn to work session?
So move.
In favor?
Aye.
opposed? And let's take a five-minute break and meet you back, I guess.